Okay, we're gonna call the committee of the meeting, committee of the whole meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October 2nd at 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Risado?
Here.
ATAC?
Here.
Stern?
Chancet?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Halligan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone? And McFadden?
Here.
Very good. We do have a quorum. Let me remind everybody to try to use the mic within six to eight inches of you so that everybody that's listening can hear what we have to say. Moving on then to item two is items to be removed, added, or changed. Does anybody have anything?
No.
Nope? Anybody else? Okay, item three matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Okay, item four consent agenda, which has got one item, that is Resolution 18-113-R, authorization to execute a contract for the 2018-2019 snow and ice removal services with Snow Systems Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $75,000. Anybody have any comments or questions on that? Mike?
I do. Do we feel okay with using a wheeling company as opposed to a Batavia company? I would find it hard to believe that they could get here like that when we have a snowstorm and clearing our sidewalks and that.
I actually had some very similar concerns, so I did some emailing back and forth between Scott Haynes and myself, and he feels very comfortable. He's checked out their references. They were looking to place a cargo container down at the north end of the Larson Becker parking lot where they could park a couple small skidsters and brooms or what have you. Our zoning ordinance does not allow that, so what they have worked out is one of the bays in the tin garage that we didn't tear down, they're gonna let them occupy, and possibly they might be having a skidster parked outside of it or something like that. But my concern was just like yours. Are they gonna be here within that hour that's in the bid documents and Scott feels comfortable that they will be? I also had a concern that they would maybe not be paying prevailing wage, and Scott says that this is a contract services and they're not required to pay prevailing wage. So he did his homework and felt comfortable with the references, so.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, can I get a motion to recommend the city council?
So moved. Second?
Motion by Wolf, second by Risado, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Next item is item number five, which is the approval of the strategic action plan. Government Services, Alderman ATAC?
Yes, so this is the action plan that staff has created with the priorities that council set for the three strategic planning meetings that we had, and so I'm gonna turn this over to Delora to talk about your thought process and all the reasons for what you decided.
So we talked about this last week, and there were a couple of suggestions to add, seeking grant funding for one item, and also adding in cooperation with the Park District for the section of sidewalk that would eliminate the stairs on the east side adjacent to the Larson Becker parking lot. I contacted the Park District, Allison Niemela, and she said while perhaps in the future when we get to the stage of actually planning how that comes about, that it may turn into a cooperative project between the city and the Park District, she would hope, as staff has also expressed, that perhaps when we find a developer for the Larson, the former Larson Becker property, that they might participate in some way in helping bring that to fruition. So it wasn't something where they were saying, "We want no part of it." They just said perhaps we would come in at a later stage of the plan. And so with that, I don't know if you wanna talk over any of the items that are part of the strategic plan, or if people feel comfortable with what's here. We will certainly, the philosophy here was to begin with an internal analysis to both look at the, establish the need and want for the items that are on this strategic plan, and if there is the need and want for those things, to determine a means of how we would finance bringing that about before we engage in any in-depth engineering for that project. So for instance, with regard to the extension of the bike path, we might first explore a means of getting a private public partnership for having that come about as opposed to budgeting that ourselves, or in the event that city council feels that this is a project that they would like to see sooner rather than later, and make it a priority to happen soon, then we would talk about how to finance that either on our own or in conjunction with the Park District. Lucy?
I have a couple of questions, and they may have been discussed, but you know, in the past, we've agreed on things as a council, like Streetscape, and there's still some of the Streetscapes, or two of them that we haven't done yet. So I'm wondering how that has been talked about and how we might or might not incorporate that into this plan, and also entrance signage to the city, and it's kinda specific, I know, but I think it has a big impact, and I'm not sure where that would fall in this framework. And then I had one more, and I'll come back to it when it comes to my mind.
Okay, in response to the question that you had about Streetscape, that's an excellent one, and it really pertains to a few different areas of the strategic plan, where work has been done by previous city councils to create these plans, but they have not been executed upon. And in this plan, for instance, we talk about doing an overall comprehensive plan for our downtown, and one of those exists, but it was done back in, I think, 2011. So here we are, seven years later, and the question is whether that same plan is still relevant. I think that what we're doing is starting with taking a look at what plans exist to determine, is any further work necessary, or is this the plan that you would like to continue to execute on? And if that's the case, then how do we pay for those elements? Gary, do you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
Perfectly said.
Okay. And then the other thing was the entrance signage, and for the, for every year that I've been here, we've had those in the budget, and we're currently going through our budgetary discussions right now. This week, we just completed, Peggy and I and each department head and superintendent have all sat down and completed an initial draft of our budgets, and this entrance signage continues to be a line item there. And so it would be my intent that between now and the end of the year, or shortly after the beginning of the year, to come to you with a plan for how that could be accomplished. But I think it's something that because it has been in the budget in the past, it's a line item this year, that we considered that sort of a day-to-day task that we were going to get completed anyway. It was maintenance of a current asset of the city.
And then I guess, we kinda discussed this, and maybe you brought it up, kind of continuity of planning, and you had mentioned some software that would help with that, and I don't know if that's gonna be included in here, but you know, I do feel that we kind of approved Streetscape, I'm just using Streetscape as an example, and so the council has kind of approved it, and it looks like we're gonna go back and decide whether or not we want it, the council wants to do that. And I'm not sure, I don't know, it seems like we move forward and then we step back, and we've done that several times when there's been kinda some transitions. And I'm not sure that that's the smoothest way to operate and achieve our goals. So I'm wondering if, have you talked about how we can address that?
No, I haven't, but I'll, thank you for bringing it up. I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind. There, we have been approached by a couple of companies. One is called OpenGov and the other is called ClearGov, and both of these companies offer software, a software platform, a hosted software platform, that is for transparency, and it meaning transparency marrying together your budget, financial reporting, and your strategic plan, as well as other means of engaging the community and sharing with them key performance indicators throughout the year. And it is a platform that is not inexpensive, I will share that with you, but it's a new way of doing business. And I think that the difference here would be, we want this plan to have a life of its own, where we're answering to this plan, and we're being held accountable to this plan, regardless of whether the individual in a position changes, whether it be Alderman, whether it be any of the staff members. We know what needs to get done because it's right here. And as we do things throughout the year, I would expect that our memos that are, accompany resolutions and ordinances and requests for funding, and you know, things which are budgeted items, that we would reflect back upon this budget. And what was cool about the OpenGov software platform that we were taking a look at was that as your budget is being built, you are able to say, this particular line item ties back to objective one, action one, item one. And you're able to, throughout that budget cycle, see what is, what is the status of that particular objective and line item, and it gives you a dashboard so that you can keep track of whether items are in progress, what is their percent complete, or if they have already been completed. Alderman Meitzler?
I'm not gonna say I'm against the software, having worked in software, I'm usually fine with seeing new software, but I guess before we even pursue any sort of, or explore any sort of software, I mean, I think, and maybe this is what you're getting to, we just need a regular annual visit checkup on, are these still the correct priorities?
And that doesn't require any software. That's just having that traceability matrix, and if that's in place, and we're regularly,
not saying frequently, but you know, regularly visiting what the plans are and adjusting them accordingly, then I don't, then I think they'll stay fresh for everyone on the council, no matter who's on the council at what day.
And that's why those two, last two columns are there. You know, we've got some empty columns for status and comments. It was anticipated that on a quarterly basis, that we would be reporting back as to what, where we were at with regard to those items.
I think we need, oh, go ahead. In response, I think we need a long, I think there's a risk when you compare year to year of losing the long-term vision, and I think whether it's this software or just a big Excel spreadsheet, I think it's important to have at least a five-year look at the planning, because you'll kinda know where you started. So you know, I think we talked about annually, right before budget time, looking at the strategic plan and incorporating that into what we do, just our procedures like other communities do. So I would just say, I hope that we, we keep in mind that we have to, a little longer horizon than year to year. Excuse me.
I feel like we talked about a lot of things during the strategic planning sessions, and not everything made it onto this list, because not everything got enough votes or not enough consensus, so there's projects that probably could've, should've made it on there. If we are gonna revisit Streetscape, I feel like it would've made it on the list if there would've been consensus for it. So maybe we do need to revisit it if we left some things off, or...
Well, there were, not everyone was at every meeting, and it wasn't, we never had a point where we went back and said, "Okay, is this it? Do we get everything?" You know, I think...
Lucy, pull the mic up.
Not, not everyone was at every meeting, and we never had a point where we looked at what we put together and said, "Is this it? Did we get everything?"
We're doing that now.
Okay, right. So okay, this is kind of it, but includes the action plan too, so I'm just throwing these things out there. And again, I feel like we've approved Streetscape, we made a big investment, the residents, and again, I'm just using this as an example, the residents made an investment, we made investment, and the consultants, and then it's just, now we're, maybe we're not gonna do it because it didn't make the list, but it's already been on the list. So... In a way, it did, because all of those spaces are in our downtown, and we'll be doing downtown planning. So I think that we should include those. And, and one of the things that came up last time as well, is that this is, this is not the end of this strategic action plan. In fact, this is still high level. Under one, each one of the action items, there'll be, the department heads are gonna create a whole hierarchy underneath that big action item. So when we say review existing plans, those existing plans would include the Streetscape plans that exist as well. Thank you.
Would that also include the bridge, the second bridge?
When we get down to that action item of looking at the second bridge, it would include looking at existing plans.
Okay.
And as a starting point, because why engage in a whole new study if we feel that we can agree upon what was decided in the, in the previous iteration?
Building on what Lucy was just saying, does anyone have any gaping holes? Does anyone see anything that did not make it on the list? Did you miss a meeting or two that you didn't get a chance to raise your hand on something? I don't see any gaping holes except for Streetscape, you're right. That is probably not as represented as, does anyone else see anything?
Well, I do think Streetscape falls within this, the plan, you know, for downtown.
The general plan.
I mean, this is, these are big buckets that we're, that we're looking at, that we're going to be filling in, and that's where you have to start. You have to start with these big, you know, these, these large sort of things, and then fill in. So I like where this is going. We just, we need, you know, to Elliot's point, we need to develop priorities and action, you know, within this action plan, and we have to revisit them, at least on a quarterly basis. If that software can help tie things together, that's great, that's awesome, but we need accountability, and we need to hold each other accountable, as opposed to just, "Oh, there's not enough people here, we're gonna kick it down the road." You know, I mean, we, we need to be able to say, "We're gonna, we're gonna put it on the schedule, we're gonna do this once a quarter, it's the first Tuesday of every quarter," or whatever it's gonna be, but these need to tie back. That way, when we get to budgeting, we, you know, we're not in the dark, or don't have to refresh our memory, how do all these things tie together? We run into the budgeting, the budgeting plan knowing what we're looking for.
I also kinda look at it to echo what Scott and Elliot just mentioned, too. It reminds me so much of the vehicle replacement plan that we have in our budget. You know, there's a plan for the next five or 10 years out with the fire department, what, what units are gonna need to be replaced at what year, and, and so they plan for that. They, you, we all plan for that action to happen that year. So a plan like that would be helpful. I agree.
Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I think the strategic plan is just fine. I appreciate everything that's been raised. I just sit here though, as only know I represent the region and the Chicago Metro Chief, the Agency for Planning, Council Mayor, which gets me a seat on the State Transportation Policy Committee, which makes all the final decisions.
Mayor, could I interrupt you and get you to pull the mic up toward me?
So I would tell you that, you know, I'm in there two or three times a month, and there is such a backlog of requests for state and federal money, and so many applications for grants, that, you know, I read this and see that, we're hoping that we can explore grant possibility funding in 2019. It ain't gonna happen. I mean, there's, there's, the IDOT's backlog is just phenomenal, as the number of projects that they already have in the, in the process that they don't have funding for. I mean, when I was first elected here many years ago, it used to be people would come down and say, "Well gee, just apply to the federal government for a state or federal grant." And you could sometimes do that, and sometimes it would work. I will tell you right now, it's not gonna work, that if, if we're gonna fund anything, we gotta probably have to figure out how to fund it ourselves, because you know, I guess there's political talk now by the gubernatorial candidates that they're all gonna come up with some capital bill. Well, I'll tell you, the waiting list for things that wanna throw themselves on that capital bill is at just a phenomenal record. Just the RTA and their backlog of need for rebuilding the metro system is just hundreds of millions of dollars. I mean, hundreds of millions of dollars, and most of the cars that are on the system now are 50, 60 years old. I mean, we have a very serious funding crisis in Illinois and in this country, and I just don't wanna get anybody excited here to say, "Gee, we're gonna do this in 2019 or 2023." I think it's a lot longer wait than that before this money comes available, if it ever comes available. It's just, nobody, everybody I work with in there says, "We've never seen it either this bad or this recessed back so far, as far as the number of people that are now waiting in line for grants." We've just gone through a very intricate process that's been highly controversial about, the feds have come in and said that they don't want any more applications for federal projects that want, want to be, hopefully going to be built, but if the city doesn't have the 20% local match to be ready to put on the table to pay for it, they're not gonna wanna honor it. And we've had a big back, big problem in there where people have come in and asked for projects, and then lo and behold, when they get awarded it, they can't come up with a local match, or they don't have the right of way, or they don't have the engineering, or anything they were supposed to have been doing, and then they are hoping they can go for another grant to get that done. And so the feds are enacting new rules as of October of 2020, that basically say, "If you got a federal project and you've been awarded the money, like we have for Prairie Street and Main Street in Batavia, we better have the baby under construction by October of 2020, or the money comes off the table." And there is a, there's a big city nearby us that politically always was known for carrying all kinds of clout. Last I knew, they had 46 projects on the table that they didn't have grant, or they didn't have matches for, and they're about to lose a whole bunch of that stuff. So that's gonna be a great point of irony in someplace nearby us here. So this is just a very touchy situation, and I'm just speaking to you as a guy that sits there and listens to all this, and then gets calls from all these specifically suburban mayors saying, "Isn't there something you can do to help me get this $40 million," or whatever number they're looking for. The Illinois Tollway has got an interesting project going, they're gonna rebuild the 294 from 90 down to 95th Street, and they think it's gonna take them seven, eight years to probably do it. And I'm not sure, they, they've got one thing going for them, they got the toll money, and that seems to be the only one really on the street that probably can produce the revenue to put their plans into action. All this going for state and federal grants, I don't believe it at the moment. I mean, we can say it, and I think it's good we do, I mean, it's, it used to be an option, but I don't think it's there much anymore.
Anyone else?
It's not a gaping hole, but I talked to Laura about it last night, I'm not sure how many people read the August issue of IML, it talked about ride sharing and Uber and Lyft, and some communities are doing things to supplement, instead of having parking lots for commuters, doing stuff to help with using Lyft or Uber, and communities have partnered with them. So if people are amenable to adding that as a possibility of that line item, to explore that, and not be so, "Hey, we have to have a parking lot, maybe there's a better way to do it, that might even be cheaper."
Everybody think that's a good idea? Sounds like it.
Just to clarify, you're looking for like an, like an Uber or like a Lyft corral, like a place you know you could find them quick?
No, it would, what these communities have done, they've partnered, and the community pays a portion of their trip to Geneva. Or maybe the RTA is chipping in a portion of it, now they know, "Oh, I've got a commuter, I just need to get him to the train."
Gotcha.
And maybe it replaces buses, I have no idea, but it's, it's just, it's additive to the public transportation.
Along those lines, it would be interesting to have explored whether or not there's any tax write-offs, because a lot of companies use all of that as, you can write off your taxes for your public transportation, and if that Uber does get worked into a public partnership, and it does get considered transportation, there could be tax implications for, for people that do, that do do that. So I would fully support that.
So Laura, you're looking for approval of the action plan as presented?
Mm-hmm.
If there aren't any other, are there more comments? Then I'll make a motion that we approve the action plan as presented.
To include Alderman Uwer's recommendation?
To include Alderman Uwer's action item to be explored.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Okay. Looks like we're gonna move on then to the next item, which is project status.
So just to update you on some of the things that we have going on, the Park District has their building permit for the improvements that they're making to the East Side Community Center. Prairie Commons, they're still doing the excavation work there, but they continue to work on that. Windmill Landings, their plans have been submitted to us, and so those are under review. And also the updated plans for the subdivision on the Land Meyer property behind Sam's Club, we've also received those, so those are in the queue after Jeff Albertson gets done with the landings, he's on to the, the Land Meyer subdivision.
Laura, doesn't that require any more approvals?
Uh...
As far as zoning or anything?
Yes, so that, that has not yet gone through the Plan Commission review, so this is Jeff Albertson's initial review and staff review, and the process is then all of the various departments, engineering, electric, streets, police, fire, all take a look at those plans. They put comments into our electronic system for, that we use for development, and then we have a meeting with the developer to give them some feedback on the initial plans that they've presented to us, so that when it does get submitted to Plan Commission, it can be in as compliant with our code as possible, to try to make that process as efficient as possible, so they don't have to go multiple times before Plan Commission. And then once Plan Commission approves it, of course, then it comes to, back to committee of the whole and to city council. Let's see, anything else? With the retirement of one of our watch commanders from the police departments, the Police and Fire Commission will be interviewing candidates for promotion, and so we'll have that to announce here pretty soon, once a decision has been made. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions for me. The Home Rule Mailer should be coming in your, in your mailbox either today or tomorrow. And then just a reminder that in there is an invitation to attend an informational meeting here at City Hall on October 8th from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. There will be a panel of individuals here to answer any questions that residents have about Home Rule, as well, there'll be a brief presentation in the beginning of that meeting, just to share some facts about Home Rule, what types of revenues that the city has created with its Home Rule power as well. Daniel, Chief of Police, is gonna be on that panel, so that he can talk about crime-free housing and the impact that that has had on our community as well. So invite everyone who's interested to attend that meeting, but if you'd like to watch it in the comfort of your own home, BATV is going to be live broadcasting as well as posting a recording of that as well. We will also, with all of the questions that we received that evening at that informational meeting, will be creating a Q&amp;A document, which we will post as soon as possible after the meeting, so that anyone who presents us with a question, even if we didn't have time to answer it that night, there will be a document posted with an answer to their question.
Laura?
On Home Rule, I had a question from somebody, and I think I answered it correctly, but when the whole video gaming thing came to town, there were some things that we were able to do because of Home Rule?
Yes.
That we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise, as far as setting fees and things like that?
Exactly. Definitely. That is with our home. I would say one of the biggest distinctions between Home Rule and non-Home Rule is that by that constitutional amendment giving communities with 25,000 or more Home Rule, the state was saying that unless we have made a law specifically prohibiting you from taking action, or if it's an area of the law that we have preempted, then you have the power to make local laws about local issues. If it's something that's important to the health, safety of your community, then you have the ability to... then you have the ability to enact legislation.
So with that, we were able to set fees at a much higher level than what the state-
That's correct.
Allowed.
That's correct.
Anyone else? Elliot?
Just on that meeting, and while I certainly hope we have a large turnout to attend that meeting, if people are unable to, but do have questions, are we publishing any contact information for them to submit their questions, and either answer in recording that night, or hopefully also publishing the answer as well?
We will certainly do that.
Mine was along the same lines of, "What if 500 people show up? What's the contingency plan for that?" Or it was along the same lines, that if people are watching from home, and they decide, "Well, I don't have to attend if I know there's going to be an interactive, that my question will be able to get there that night, it may save coming down here."
Right. And even if we're not able to answer during the live broadcast program, we're going to put it into that Q&amp;A document. So we'll, we will broadcast, and if, if the room hits its capacity, we will have someone who can provide information to the overcapacity folks, that here's how you find it on BATV, and here's where you can send a question if after that you still have a question. And that's another reason why we're having the meeting a month before we're voting, so that if we do have that extraordinary turnout, perhaps we can redo and have another meeting, so that those people can show up to a live meeting, if that's what they wish.
You're going to publish Anthony's email address? Didn't you get like 200 emails for Campana?
At least. That was just the first day.
Maybe we could just publish your email address.
Anyone else? Just one quick question I've got for you, Laura. Maybe it's a Gary question, I'm not sure. I seem to recall that we approved, and we're going to be doing some riverbank restoration, protection of utilities behind the Creamery, right, that building there?
Yes. And extending to, next to the, south of the bridge as well.
Right. So the contractor started down by the treatment plant, and is working their way north. Obviously, their progress has just been inhibited by the rains and the high water levels.
Okay, so they're moving, they are moving north, and they will get to it when water levels are low.
Right, yeah. Treatment plant to the Peace Bridge are the rough limits.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Anybody else have anything? Mayor, anything? All right, then. Item seven's been taken care of. For others, motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
Motion by Suvati, second by Chanzak. All in favor?
Aye.